Nearby call to order, the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, December 7th, 2022. Could we have a roll call?
Yes, I'll do the roll call. Chair Quillisi?
Here.
Vice Chair Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Starkweather?
Here.
And Commissioner Trent is absent.
Right. Okay, Commissioner Murphy, if you'd lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With a follow-up question to your previous statement, can you read lips? Okay, next on the agenda is public communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the Commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. So I have one card, one speaker card, Mr. James Beck, come forward, please.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and Council. My name's Jim Beck. I'm a resident of the Hitching Post Estates across from the high school and in between Church Road and Prairie Road. At this time in our community, we are going through a process of amending our CCNRs, which in our CCNRs, it stipulates that any action in changing the CCNRs would have a review from the city, Ojai City. And I'm here to just introduce myself. This is going to be a process over the next six to eight weeks, and I just wanted to give a brief summary of what is going on. We're a community of approximately 50 units. Most of them are two- and three-bedroom units with two-car garages. We are one of four one-bedroom units with one-car garages. We've been, my wife and I moved here, we love Ojai, we moved here four years ago. Throughout that four years, we've parked safely in our community. There are 40 parking spots, community parking spots within our community. At any given time throughout the day or night, there is approximately three to, at the most, eight vehicles parked in those 40 spots, leaving all the other spots unused. The proposed amendment to the CCNRs is to make all those parking spots only for guest parking. The reasoning behind this is because the current board and a few other residents don't want our community to look like a six-motel, and that's anything from farther than the truth that could be going on. So I just wanted to speak to the point of Perry Road is closest to our units, and that's where my wife and I have two vehicles. We park one in the garage and one on the property. That would force me to park out on the Perry Road at night, that wouldn't be as big of an issue, but during the day, Perry Road is totally full. There is absolutely no parking on Perry Road. When we appealed, when I appealed to my fellow board members, I'm a current board member, but I will be stepping off the board this month, their explanation was, well, just park out on Church Road. And I had a recent back surgery that went awry, and I provided my temporary disability to them, and their explanation for that was, well, you can have your wife park out on the street and you park in the garage. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention, and over the next probably six weeks, you'll be getting some other emails and some information on this, but I just wanted you to put a face to what's going on and give you a background, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Could we ask questions?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. So you're speaking as a resident who's objecting to the development's proposal for parking?
Correct, sir.
Is that what's your time?
Yes.
And they're going to bring that to our attention, the development, or you're going to bring that?
Well, in our CCNRs, it stipulates that this must go to the city for any potential, you know, I feel for potential negative issues to residents and...
But they haven't indicated that they plan to voluntarily come here. You're trying to bring it before us.
I'm coming way before the wave, so I just wanted to give you an idea that my wife and I, we feel it's going to affect the resale value of our home. In other words, if a married couple comes in our community and wants to buy the home, and they find out that they got to park maybe out on Church Road, which is a pretty good hike, or out on the other street, which isn't as far of a hike, but during the day, there is no parking out there. So we've asked for an accommodation or to ride into the CCNRs, but it falls upon mute ears.
So you mentioned there were 40 parking spaces, but only three to eight vehicles. How can you explain that?
I walked the...
Hold on, I'm just going to chime in here. This isn't a debate. This is really information that I think Mr. Beck is providing at this point.
I wasn't trying to debate, I was just trying to find out what was being said.
What I think is important is he's providing the information. It's likely that it's going to be coming through community development.
I see.
Before, it's before these eyes, if it's even necessary, but...
Please come by and drive through our community. It's a lovely community, and there is no parking issues.
I've canvassed it, so I know it pretty well.
I've walked it, I've walked it too, yeah. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Beck.
Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Certainly, certainly. Is there anyone else here, or I guess Sherry can't see the waiting room?
We received a message that there are no other people...
No one else in the waiting room with a hand raised?
That's correct.
Okay. Is anyone else here present who wishes to speak during public comment? All right, seeing none, we will close that part of the meeting and go on.
Can I ask a question of Lucas about this?
Of course.
So this change in the CCNR, is that required to come back for us by the developer who's wanting to change it? Is that what that, what is the process? Why are we...
Have to look at the CCNR and see what's written in there.
Yeah.
I think that's correct, Commissioner Starkweather, is that until, unless Lucas has looked at the particular CCNR, that neither of us really knows what's in it.
I see.
And so we can't analyze.
But if they want to change it, they've got to come back to us.
Well, that's what Mr. Beck said.
Oh, okay, so we don't know that.
If it's specified within the CCNRs.
We don't know right now. As I was talking with Mr. Beck before the meeting, I used to be in an HOA down in Redondo Beach, and we had no such clause in our CCNRs. So we'll have to wait and see.
Correct.
Can we assume that the city has a copy of those CCNRs, or?
If it's recorded, then we either have a copy or we have the ability to get a copy.
Or you can get a copy, okay.
Yeah.
Great. Then if it's appropriate, it'll come back before this commission, or?
Just trying to get some context of what you're talking about here.
Okay, our consent item is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for November 16th. Did any Commissioners have any refinements to those meetings? I did note on page one of the minutes, it said Commissioner, but did not say Bennett, in the pledge of allegiance, and I think Sherry made that change.
Hmm, that's important.
Other than that, oh, and on page four, second paragraph, it said Assistant City Attorney Margolin, and then stopped. I don't know what the reference was, so...
Where are we on that?
Page four, it's actually the fourth line from the top. It says, "The Commissioners asked questions," and then Assistant City Attorney Margolin. Is that, did I say that right, or is it Margolin?
I pronounce it Margolin, but it's fine.
I, no, having an unusual name myself, I want to be careful, thank you. I just say Epi and forget about the rest. Anyway, I don't know what, I don't know what was supposed to go in there. And in the absence of knowing what's supposed to go in there, I would suggest us just deleting the reference.
Drink it.
I agree. I would agree.
Anyone else have anything? Then a motion to approve the minutes as amended would be appropriate.
I'll move to amend them.
Second.
I mean, not to amend them, to approve them.
Approve them as amended, okay?
Approve them as amended.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Can we take a vote, a roll call vote on that then?
Yes. Commissioner Starkweather?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bennett?
Yes.
Chair Quillisi?
Yes, thank you all.
And Trent is absent.
And disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts, we do have one site in the city that is on our agenda tonight, 1115 North Drown. Mr. Starkweather?
I didn't go by there, but I've canvassed that area, so I know the location.
Okay.
I went by, it was difficult to really ascertain much from drive-by because there were several construction trucks in the area, so...
And a porta potty in the driveway.
Yes.
And a lot of foliage in the front yard, yeah.
So you really couldn't see.
Okay, yeah, I also visited the site, had no ex parte contacts.
I visited the site, had no contact.
Very good. Then let's move on to the public hearing item, number two, design review permit 22013.
Thank you, Chair.
Staff?
Thank you, Chair Quillisi and Commissioners. This project is a request for a design review permit for the construction of a 449-square-foot second-story addition to an existing single-story detached garage for a proposed accessory dwelling unit, and it's located at 1115 Drown Avenue. The project's site is an 11,700-square-foot rectangular parcel developed with a 1,958-square-foot single-story, single-family residence and a 540-square-foot detached garage. The residence and the two-car garage are setback approximately 25, 20 feet from the front property line where 25 feet is required, therefore, the structures are considered legal nonconforming as they are. Due to the setback requirement, the applicant has proposed to set the second story back five feet, so it will meet the 25-foot front yard setback. The existing garage has a side yard setback of 10 feet and 9 inches, where 12 feet on that side is currently required. The second-story addition is proposed to continue that 10-foot, 9-inch setback and then actually further encroach into the side setback to 6 feet 9 inches for the proposed staircase to access the ADU. However, this is not a zoning issue for the Planning Commission to consider because pursuant to a section in the municipal code 102.1709, the side yard setback for an accessory dwelling unit is allowed to be four feet at the side or rear, and it's exceeding that four-feet requirement. The Planning Commission is charged with review and determination of the design review permit for this project because any second-story unit, or second-story, two-story structure, excuse me, in a residential zone is subject to reviewing and determination by the Planning Commission. And pursuant to another section in the code, staff would normally be ministerially approving an accessory dwelling unit, however, because it's a second story, it's before you tonight. The existing residence and the detached garage currently complement each other with materials, colors, and architectural style. Unfortunately, it doesn't sound like you were able to see it that much during your site visits. The second-story addition above the garage continues with the same architectural theme. The walls are proposed to have wood siding that matches the existing structure and the residence adjacent. The window framing, the balcony, the posts, the balusters, and the railings also match the existing garage and the residence. And we do have a...
Oh, a color board.
Rendering, this is of the, this is not of the front, however, the front is in your packets.
That's the south side?
Yes.
No.
This is the, this is the rear, actually.
The rear, yeah, okay, thank you.
Now, in your packets, you do have renderings of all the sides, so you'll have a front rendering. The applicant, along with the architect, are presenting an addition that blends well with the existing site and the neighborhood, and staff is recommending approval. If you have any questions, the applicant, the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for staff? I have just one. As you noted, the residents and the existing garage are legal nonconforming. The ADU, it sounds to me like will be legal conforming. Is that, is that, what's the legal implication there if you've got a garage that's legal nonconforming and a structure above it that's legal conforming? Does it matter?
Well, the addition is conforming, and so therefore, it is legal and, it is legal and conforming.
It's legal conforming, right.
And then the side setback is also conforming because of the ADU standards.
Does, does the new construction create it, create a conforming garage beneath it? No, it doesn't, it doesn't cure...
Oh, no.
The fact that it's nonconforming.
No, the first story, I'm sorry if I didn't answer that question.
Your story is still legal nonconforming.
That's correct. I thought you were just talking about the second story. The garage is still legal nonconforming, and it will still be acting as a garage, by the way.
And, and you can't take something that's too close to a lot line and make it conforming by adding a piece that's further away from the lot line that is conforming?
Correct. The first story will still be legal nonconforming. That's not being adjusted or even attempted to make conforming.
I can't tell from the narrative or from the drawing, and it's my fault, I think, not the fact that the data isn't here, but there is a gate to the left, to the south...
The south side, yeah.
Of the garage door, which I believe runs parallel to the garage door, is that?
Yes, that, if you're facing the garage, it's to the left.
Right.
There's a gate, and it matches the color of the garage door.
And, and is that a conforming gate in terms of its height?
Let's ask the applicant, the height of the gate, but six feet is the, is the height limitation, so we'll ask that question of the applicant.
Thank you.
Well, that's an interesting question, because if it's a fence or a wall along the side of the property, six feet is the limit. But this, and this is behind the front setback, so it's not a four-foot limit.
It's at six at this point.
What is it?
It would be at six, it would be six feet, one, as soon as you get to the front face of the main structure.
Anything behind the front setback, six feet?
At or behind, yes.
The six-foot limit, okay.
At, yes.
So...
I did see the gate, it's not more than six feet tall, I don't think.
I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
And I couldn't, I couldn't tell, and I wasn't sure, and it's not fully drawn, I believe, in the drawings.
Right, it's...
But it, it was just, in the rendering of the front, there's one page which is a color rendering of the front, it shows that, at my guess, what would be about six feet, but I don't know whether that's the scale or not.
Could I ask a question of Lucas and Ephraim about the nonconforming? So it doesn't matter the nature of the nonconforming, as long as you're putting an ADU on there and it, the ADU meets the standard, it doesn't matter how nonconforming the existing structure could be? Or is there some judgment there?
So within the code, if you have a nonconforming situation and you're going to be proposing an addition that is continuing, but this is not, but if it were continuing that nonconforming situation, like if this second story was going to have this 20-foot setback, for instance, in the front, if it's a setback issue, then the director or the Planning Commission, in this case, because it's a second story, has the authority to approve that.
I see.
Or deny it, but you have the authority to continue that. There are certain types of nonconformities that would require a variance, but setbacks for sure is one of them that the director or the Planning Commission have the authority to, to review through either a DE or a DRB.
Presumably, the neighbors were all notified of this.
Yes.
Have you had any feedback from them?
We have not, but that is something that we make sure to talk to with applicants and architects when it's a second-story addition, that they contact all of their adjacent neighbors, give them an opportunity before they receive a hearing notice to know about the project.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Then let's hear from, I'm not sure, the applicant, Steve Allery, Allery?
That's the architect, we do have the property owner here.
And the property owner as well, so your choice, who you want to have speak, sir, or both of you for that matter.
Well, I'm here. My name's Cliff Hirschman, I live at 1115 Drown with my wife, Marie, and we're here to answer any questions.
The only question I've heard so far is how, excuse me, how tall that gate is.
I would say six feet.
Looks like from this drawing that it's a little under six feet to me, but...
Yeah, because it's right about here, I'm 5'10", so it's right there.
Okay. And I was just looking at drawing A08, it looks okay.
If I can put a point on what my point was, it sits, while it sits in front of the house, it is, it is, since it's a, a nonconforming, legal nonconforming house, it, four feet would be normally what you'd find in that place, but as it relates to the house, the measure is from the curb, not from the house, I assume, I mean, from the house, not the curb, so, you know, it's measured from the facade of the house. And it just seemed very, it seemed very high for a front, front yard fence, to me. It wasn't the, six feet seemed high, per se, but it seemed like a lot of mass.
It really has a beautiful scale with everything, and the house is on the other side, it's a gate.
Yeah, I saw it.
We have a trash can on the side, and then also the stairwell. So I think we benefit this street by keeping it six feet because it's really attractive and it keeps away the trash cans and other things.
Attractive is in the eye of the beholder.
Yeah.
So, I was surprised, frankly, well, I'll, I'll deal with these when we have a chance for discussion, but...
Okay, any questions for the applicant?
Is this going to be a deed-restricted affordable unit or senior unit?
You're asking me what we're going to use it for?
Is it going to be a deed-restricted affordable unit? Yeah, that's what affordable, that's what ADUs were supposedly promoted as.
We're not planning to rent it out.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
Mine, I don't understand the question, but we're not planning to rent it out.
Okay.
I don't believe that 1021709 says anything about ADUs being deed-restricted.
An ADU is not required to be deed-restricted or for affordable housing.
It was promoted as an affordable housing strategy. It's been promoted during the recent months.
During, during state legislative sessions, perhaps.
Well, in Ojai, it was, and it's been, it's been stated by elected officials, including the mayor.
All right. I think that's it for now, sir, unless you have any questions of us.
Uh, no, not at all, but thank you.
Okay, you've been working with staff, so you understand the processes here for getting things done and getting paperwork done and all of that, right?
I'm a little, is there a vote by you today to get this, or?
That's, that's what staff is asking us to say yes or no to, the design review permit.
Yes, you will go be discussing.
Yeah, we have another item tonight that's not a public hearing, we'll discuss, but we won't take a vote on it. So we do different things with different items, but this is a public hearing. That's why anyone in the public is welcome to come and speak on it, any of your neighbors, for example. And obviously, as the applicant, you have more or less unlimited time to speak on your own behalf, but yes, we, when we finish with the public hearing, then we'll discuss it among ourselves and make a decision whether it's yes or no, or we still need information and we'll continue the item to the next meeting, or, you know, there's a lot of possibilities there.
I have a, I do have a question.
Sure.
Is the construction that's going on there now permitted construction?
It's, no, it's landscaping, we're just doing landscaping.
There's a plumbing truck out there.
That's not our truck.
Oh, it was parked right in front of the house.
I have no idea.
Lot going on in the neighborhood, it sounds like.
Yeah, we did have the pool filter being replaced by our pool guy, so...
Oh, that might be it.
That must be it.
That could have been what you thought was plumbing.
Well, it looks like they're going to be there for a while because of the porta potty, that's the, or your contractor anticipates we're going to say yes.
Yeah, they should be there another two weeks, so they have to retile the pool, some other stuff.
Oh, that's all pool work they're talking about?
Yeah.
I saw, I saw a pile of sand, for example, on the driveway.
Yes, for the base.
That's for the pool work?
Yeah, for the base, for the tile, so...
Okay.
And is Allery an architect, or is he an expediter?
Expediter.
Okay.
Yeah. And so will I be able to address this gate thing? Was that a problem with anyone? Am I able to ask that before I leave?
I mean, did someone...
The gate, was the gate a problem with something?
Someone asking us to ask you?
No, no, I'm asking, you seem to be concerned with the gate.
Well, front gate, well, front fences are often, and actually are typically, problems in neighborhoods because people don't want high-front fences, and it's rare to see a fence that is, that is high, and I noted that the building was nonconforming, and I was wondering whether the fence was nonconforming as well, and the fact that it lines up with the facade of the house and of the garage is the measure of whether it should be a six-feet fence or a four-foot fence.
Oh, okay, okay.
If it, if it, if the wording didn't say that if it lines up with the house, it is not a, it's not, it's no longer a front fence, it's, it becomes a side fence, which can be as high as six feet. And there are not a lot of, as I drove through the neighborhood, what I was going to say earlier, I didn't see a lot of, of, of things that are built with the mass that this will have in, close in to the front of the house. That there's, there's one two-story, as I came in, up Drown, north up Drown, that is two-story, right to the front of the house, but for the most part, second stories tend to be further back on the, on the property. So I was looking at that and trying to feel, how would it feel to be in this neighborhood if I were, if I were here with this one house having a mass out in front of the house whereas no one else has that, that mass? It's a very handsome house, by the way, I...
Thank you.
I, it's, it's, well, I don't want to, I don't want to make the other people feel bad about how I feel about their houses, but it's a very distinguished house.
Oh, thank you.
They're all wonderful on that street.
Right.
Yeah, well, thank you very much.
Okay.
The, can I address the fence?
Sure.
Okay. Well, first, a little before that, you asked the applicant if he was aware of the process, and we've been dealing with the designer or architect and have had very little contact with the applicant, with the owner himself, until I found out today that Cameron wouldn't be here because of COVID. So, so...
One hopes that Cameron was speaking with the owners.
Oh, absolutely. However, he may not have been too aware of the process this evening. However, he may not have been too, too aware of the process this evening. I made him as, as aware as I thought was necessary. Regarding the fence, we, staff did not review the fence because it's existing, it wasn't part of this development project. However, so, in bringing it up tonight and perhaps seen otherwise, the fence would be required to be four feet high within, up to 25 feet, the front yard setback. So therefore, it is a.
Unless the front, front yard setback is different from 25 feet.
No, the front yard setback is 25 feet. And the, that's why the actual, the house and the garage are legal nonconforming because they're within that setback. They're at 20 feet.
Okay.
That's why they're legal nonconforming, the structures. So the fence is within the front yard setback area and should only be four feet high, and that's something that we generally would, we will, and we will, address at staff level. So it's, it's not something that's before you this evening. They're not requesting a variance for a fence height increase.
Is, is the gate not legal nonconforming, just like the garage?
The structures are legal nonconforming, the gate, they've, they've, they've been there, they're existing, I'm sure they've been there for a long time, and they have building permits. I can't answer the question tonight as to whether or not the fence has a fence permit.
The answer is the fence does not have a fence permit, because the fence itself has only been, the fence permit requirements have only been in place since early 2020. This fence or gate likely has been there longer than that.
So it's?
Nonconforming.
So it would not have received a permit at six feet?
It's legal nonconforming by?
I don't like to use the word legal in this point.
No, it's just nonconforming.
Because legal typically refers to the fact that there was a permit that was issued, and then it, it fell into, to the aspects of being nonconforming, meaning the code's changed, and then whatever use or aspect, building has now been rendered nonconforming.
Like the structures, the structure, the garage and the house have building permits.
Okay, I understand you not wanting to use the word legal, but if it's not legal, is it illegal?
It's, it's existing nonconforming, so it does.
Yeah, that's probably a better way to put it.
Oh, I see, existing nonconforming, but that's not the same as illegal?
Illegal is just illegal. It was illegally established, that's not what, that's not what we're dealing with here. I don't want to get into the semantics of, of the discussion of nonconforming versus conforming, but for what we're talking about in terms of the fence, the gate, nonconforming. Existing, nonconforming.
Okay.
And in order to be conforming, the applicant, well, we will talk to the applicant outside, at the counter, and they can get a request of fence permit, and.
I thought I saw the gate, though, matching the side fence. Is that correct? Is it just a gate, no side fence?
It matches the front, it matches the front of the garage.
Side fence and the side fence can, well, the side fence can continue to be six feet, but since the other fence is, is a front fence and is in the.
The side fence is required to be four feet until you get to 20, until you get to the 25-foot setback.
That's, that's my point.
And then it can be six feet.
If you start messing with the gate, you're going to have to mess with the first five feet of the fence.
Absolutely, that's, that's correct. And the, and the applicant or can shave off two feet of the fence if they would like to, to keep it there, when they get a fence permit.
You mean they can't have a six-foot fence?
Not unless they want to request a variance. This has not been discussed with the applicant yet because it wasn't part of this project. The project was the ADU, second story addition to the garage. So this will be addressed outside of the, the meeting and with the applicant, and if they wish to keep a six-foot-high gate and fence there, then they'll, staff will inform them that they have to request a variance for that, and then we will get into.
Which is another hearing.
Not only is it another hearing, but staff would recommend that they not go forward with that because in order to, in order for the Planning Commission to approve a variance, there has to be some type of an odd situation on the property, and we have a perfectly rectangular flat lot, so we don't, I don't see right off the bat any reason to support a variance for that, for that project. It's not unusual for someone to cut two feet off of a fence if they've put up a six-foot-high fence where a four-foot-high fence is permitted.
Yeah, I, let's focus on the, the, the aspects that are before the commission tonight, which is the second story, design components. I think that's really the focus tonight. Not, not the fence or the gate that we're, that we're looking at.
That's what the Planning Commission is charged with tonight, the design review permit for the second story.
I understand that. I'm, I am concerned that by coming in with a request for an ADU, which meets all the standards, it's, it will be legal conforming, the ADU will, that we've opened up Pandora's box here, and now everything on that lot is subject to the city saying you must go change something?
That's not a correct statement. I want to correct the record on that, just, just so that you're.
I, I'm trying to understand the situation.
Right, but I, I think you need to understand that we're focusing on the, the second story. In terms of the fence, staff hasn't reviewed the fence. We're giving you the, kind of the, the play-by-play in terms of what could potentially happen, what could potentially happen, but the reality is, is that we're focusing on the second story, not the gate, not the fence.
Thank you, sir.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else here present or in the waiting room wishes to speak on this item?
Sorry, just one second, I have a message from Sherry. There is no one logged in Zoom at all, so.
Turn your microphone on.
There is no one in the room that's wishing to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you. Then we're going to close the public hearing and come back to the Planning Commission for deliberation. Any comments, Mr. Starkweather?
Seems to comply with the requirements. I don't know what we can, you know, if there's anything that I would object to.
Ms. Murphy?
I, in light of the fact that the neighbors are not objecting, I guess I have no objections, although putting a second story on in a neighborhood that's all single story is.
Almost at least, yeah.
Almost. It, it's, I don't care for that, but I have no objections.
Okay. Mr. Bennett?
Couple of things, I, it, I don't know whether it is the expediter or the architect who uses the term adjacent to mean anything across the street, but there are a lot of pictures of things that are quoted adjacent to the house, and when you actually look at.
Next nearest parcel, I think, is what it means, but.
Yeah, well, it's, if you look up the word adjacent, and I did, this is stretching.
It's not a budding, that's for sure.
It is stretching beyond what Oxford would call adjacency, and there are a lot of pictures of houses. So when I drove out there, I was quite expecting to see that, and I didn't. And, and it is, it's a good-looking house, I mean, I, it's, it's, but I am concerned, frankly, about the, the massing of it close to the curb, and, you know, it's got, it's a fence, it's a house, it's a garage, and it's all presents itself as a one, as a, as a mass, so there's a gap between the house and the garage, and it is not the typical house with a, with a grassy front lawn, the way all the, or most of the other houses are in the neighborhood. And I'm just, I, but I, I wind up in the same place as, as the commissioner, and that is, I'm, I am surprised at the fact that there is no neighborhood pushback because it's a different house, and people typically don't like difference, but, and as a result of that, I will, you know, I will not object, but there is a paragraph, remember, and I really, by the way, I, thank you, the staff, the staff write-up on this was, you know, was right straight down the middle, but you did mention the Code Section 10, 2.2001, the purpose of the article, that, that the purpose is to maintain orderly growth with emphasis, emphasis on harmonious architectural development, and this is not harmonious with the rest of the properties there. Now, if it's good design, I don't, I tend to err on the opposite side of, of that, but it's not terribly harmonious, so that's the, but in the absence of the rest of the people, since it's all built out, the, the neighborhood's fully built out, I, and nobody is responding to the, to it, I will vote, or, I'll, I would approve with the majority, yeah.
Okay, and I feel the same way. It's a good-looking project. There may only be one other second floor in the neighborhood, but prices of housing being what they are, I suspect that eventually there will be neighbors who want to expand what they have, and going up is the only way to go at this point, unless you're going to put something in the backyard, so.
I've got a question about, and I just wanted to follow up on Judy's comment, or Commissioner Murphy, sorry, that when the city council decided to do ADUs, and knowing that the nature of the houses in Ojai, they were anticipating that a whole lot of places that didn't have second stories were going to have them over garages. My other question about it, though, it sounds like this is not going to be used to rent to somebody, otherwise it's not going to add to the housing, it's just someone expanding their own house. I didn't think that was the purpose of ADUs. I thought the purpose of ADUs was designed to create additional dwelling units, not take an existing dwelling unit and have a yoga studio and call it an ADU. Is, is there anything in our ADU ordinance that says this is supposed to be, or is this, we just said it was, and then we just let people use it however they want?
The, the ADU ordinance doesn't require that it be rented out with any, there are no restrictions to be placed on it within, within our ordinance, and once you have a kitchen, it's an accessory dwelling in it. If you don't have a kitchen, then it can be a guest's house, or a, yeah, a guest's house, and, which requires a.
Or just an accessory structure, for that matter.
Or just an accessory structure, exactly, so.
Yeah, it is, look, I don't want to get into the theory of, of why the state put together some of those regulations that now are required to follow. It, it is kind of odd, probably by design, it's meant to be affordable by design. At the end of the day, I mean, I could tell you the history of ADUs over the last 20 years in terms of what I've been dealing with, but.
They're expensive.
They, as, as the property, yeah, as the property owner, they do have the right within the parameters of the code to, to build an ADU. What happens to that ADU in the next year, five years, 10 years, is really up to that property owner if they end up selling, and then the new property theoretically ends up coming in and then wants to rent it out, they have all that, all those pieces and puzzle put together.
The only restriction is you can't rent it for less than 30 days at a time.
As an STR, which I want to make, actually, that's a really good point, I want to make sure that that's in here.
What are the conditions?
One of the last conditions, okay, good. I thought that I'd seen that in there, but now that you're mentioning it, can we require a deed restriction? No, unfortunately.
I, I wasn't suggesting we could, I just like to make a record, because there's this, there was this argument that by a number of people, and I've been involved in those debates, that, hey, ADUs are going to provide the low and the medium-low and all, you know, and I don't, I don't think anybody's going to deed restrict their house, be honest with you, but I think we should keep track of it, just like we should keep track of, people are just putting second stories on garages just to expand their house.
And just, just so you know.
And we're counting that as ADUs.
We are counting them as ADUs when we do the APR, the Assessor, annual, thank you, annual progress report that goes to HCD. They're asking whether or not they're deed restricted, deed restricted or not, and it's a box that we check for each of those ADUs.
And are we keeping track of when these places are actually rented and they become additional places for people to live in?
So here's.
I would see HCD would also want to know about that as well.
There's certain amount of information that some applicants or property owners are not going to divulge. If it is rent, we're typically looking at whether or not that rent is within the parameters of an affordability level. If it is, then we can provide information to the state, and they have credited us with lower, uh, lower, lower affordable.
Credit against the rate on number?
Yeah, rather just being a, a standard.
It would count for the market rate ones if they're not low, I assume.
Immediately, it counts for market rate.
But this can't count for it.
This one can, yes.
Can this count? Even though it's not going to be rented for anybody ever?
If it's built.
Unless they sell it?
If it's, if it's built, then yes. It's a three-step process. One is identifying the application has been received, two is identifying that it's been approved, and three is identifying that it's been built. Those, that's the three-step process that we're required to provide now.
Okay, so you're saying that then it does count against the RENA numbers?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Just counts against the market rate, RENA.
Market rate, but that's still, that's still RENA, either way.
Okay, so what's the, what's the sense of the commission here?
I, I move that we approve this application.
I'll second it.
Okay, as submitted, DRP 22013.
Thank you.
Discussion? Then let's have a roll call on item two.
All right. Vice Chair Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Chair Quillisi?
Yes.
Commissioner Starkweather?
Yes.
Okay. So, sir, you have your approval, deal with state, with staff for the rest of it.
Thank you, very much.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
We took a 2,000-square-foot house and made it a 24-inch.
All right, we'll move on to item three on the agenda, and we'll welcome Alex De Silva to the table.
That's a joke.
And we'll talk about Title 10 update. Lucas or Alex?
I'm going to have Alex give the presentation and just kind of give a warm, brief overview, and then we can, we can certainly have that discussion. This, as Alex is setting up here, no decision tonight, discussion, so we've had our public hearing item, this is, this is an opportunity for us to have that discussion. If there's people in the waiting room, certainly we can bring them in and have that conversation for Title 10, although I highly, although I would love to see a room full of people talking about Title 10. I'm not sure that we're going to get that. Something interesting to me and to Alex, and I think that this group.
There was plenty of parking available.
And we will later have a public hearing if we decide to stay with this.
As a part of the process, and I'll let Alex give the presentation, and then I'll fill in some, some of the pieces at the end here, so.
Terrific.
And I'll introduce Alex De Silva here. He's the Assistant Planner here with the City of Ojai. He's been here for about four months now, I want to say, yes, and just chugging away here at a lot of the advanced planning stuff we've got.
Well, and I have, I have to say, I've, I've had the opportunity to work with Alex now for most of that four-month period. He's bright, he's enthusiastic, and he's hardworking, and I appreciate all of those things. Thank you.
So without further ado, Alex.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners, an evening to everyone. So I'm presenting that the Title 10 revision initiative, I thought it was, would be best to do it in three parts, so that you can understand kind of how we got here, where we're going and where we are right now, yeah. So in October of 2018, City Council requested that the Planning Commission perform a cleanup of Title 10. That decision was made to be through a multi-phased approach and have Chair Quillisi actually participate as a, as a representative. The first phase of that multi-phased approach is what you're seeing now. It was agreed that that first phase would consist of solely minor revisions, like typos, embedded references that don't no longer exist, and discretionary bodies in terms that also don't, no longer exist. So at, at a Planning Commission on September 16th of 2020, the commission was, was presented with approximately 65 sections of Title 10 that were revised. So that sort of acted as a first batch of, of those revisions that were, that were able to be completed at that time. There's a pause in that work due to staff capacity and the pandemic. So I was then brought on in the summer of 22, 2022, and along with Chair Quillisi have been able to complete a new set of revisions of errata. So that's kind of where we are now. So the proposed ordinance that you have in front of you includes 186 sections of Title 10. That now combines the pre-existing. That now combines the pre-existing 65 that were presented in September of 2020. And so those additional sections are what Chair Quillisi and I have been working on up in, beginning of the summer of 2022, up until around October of 2022. And so that's kind of, that's kind of the completion, if you will, of the first phase. And so what we're here tonight to do is ask any questions that you may have had. I know you guys have had that since last Friday. So we're kind of here tonight to answer any questions or concerns that you have for that, that set of, of revisions, of that first phase. And so, yeah, that's the aim of, of tonight's meeting, if you will. And then just, yeah, just where, where we're going with that, the next step after that is, is to bring you all a resolution as a, at a subsequent meeting with the proposed draft ordinance as an attachment in hopes of obviously getting commission approval. And that would formally end Phase One. Then you also have another spreadsheet, OMC Title X Cleanup Policy Items. That's going to be Phase Two. And those have been identified preliminarily as, as major policy items that need, that, that deserve discussion with all of you and with us internally. But however, tonight is just sort of a focus to, on the, on the culmination of Phase One and the approval of that, of that draft ordinance. So, yeah.
Question?
Sure.
Couple of questions. So Phase Two, I assume that would include updating the code to meet any changes in state law that have occurred recently? Because this, you're not doing that in this.
No.
Okay.
Now, if there are, mind you, we have council that typically updates us on, legal council that provides us with the potential, you know, assembly bills or state bills that are coming down the pipeline that are going to have impacts to our municipal code. We're usually aware of that ahead of, of the adoption of those Senate bills or assembly bills. But if there are ones that have not been updated, there's a couple of, of code sections that I can think of that would need to have revisions, but ultimately, we're looking at this piece right here, the errata, as kind of the belt and suspenders to the, the larger discussion, kind of that, I use this term all the time, the deeper dive into some of those code sections that have either frustrated the community to a certain degree, frustrated this body, or even frustrated staff to a certain degree, and potentially even frustrated council, past and present or even future, so.
That, the, this compendium, or whatever it is, of, of things that have been identified as stuff, is that presented to us so we can see what you've identified, in case we have other things we want to identify?
Yes, it, it should be in a, it should be in a spreadsheet that you have.
We have a spreadsheet of?
It's Attachment B.
Yeah, Attachment B, yeah.
Last page before Tab Four.
Oh, okay, I didn't notice that. Oh, okay, okay.
Called, yeah, Title X Cleanup Residual Policy Items.
Okay, cool, okay.
And so I.
Those are the policy stuff.
Yes, yes, sir. And, and another reason for kind of putting that on hold is, is for the new city council to, to come on board. Because we want to obviously make sure of their priorities as well before we start making those kind of major policy decisions.
Yeah, it is kind of interesting. We are literally on the, on the doorstep of, of new council members coming on. We have priorities that we look at every two weeks, right? And I give, I give this body an update on the priorities, which we'll be talking about.
And Title X updates right at the top.
And Title, well, it's, and it's, this isn't a matter of a point of order, that's where they're all in bullets, but Title X is at the top.
So I would assume if you're looking to the council, that would be some kind of joint meeting between the two bodies to determine, get some feedback about what additional things they would want? Or how would you see that happening?
I mean, I'll, I'll start with this, but Quillisi, I think you can fill in some of the blanks here as well. There is typically a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and City Council. With the new city council, it's likely that there would also be a joint meeting sometime in the near future. And that would, typically with, with something like that, staff brings forward a handful of items. This body discusses it, any items that they think are also necessary for discussion. And then we take that package of information to the joint meeting and then have a fairly lengthy discussion.
If we're lucky, we get one or two of those items discussed during the joint meeting.
Yeah.
Typically scheduled for an hour, they don't quite encompass an hour. And the discussion means that we don't get very deep into whatever list we discuss.
Will they discuss the, the whole list themselves and come, get back to us? Or we're just, it's going to sit there as a?
The, the list is, is shared.
Once.
Yeah, when we, when we do, when this has been done, I mean, I've, I've been a part of this twice. Quillisi has been part of it more than twice. But in the times that, that I've been a part of it, it's, we provide the list. And then typically, there's a focus on one or two items. Within an hour, when you have 10 individuals having a discussion, two is probably about the maximum you're going to have a discussion for.
Okay, I've, I've been in four of these meetings, joint meetings with the council the last two years. We haven't had any for obvious reasons, but I'm hoping that we have one soon.
Yeah, kind of need direction.
I have a question. The, the only place that I see any reference to what I would call dark skies is on page 166, item 10. And it's, and it's actually a definitional one, and that's direct directional lighting methods. And it, it just brings to my mind the question of, is, is dark skies a state mandate? A state recommendation? What do we do with that? And is it referenced anywhere in the code in terms of?
I don't recall dark sky being referenced anywhere within the code. I think in the county's code, I think it's referenced. I think it's more of a buzzword that the, the city uses. And then we have more technical terms that we use within.
Dark sky occurs frequently in conditions of approval for, for new building, where it says all the light must be directed downward.
Oh, I, yeah, I know.
That sort of thing.
I, I, I'm, I'm aware of that, and it's, and it's.
I suspect it's in 10-216.5, External Lighting Standards. But I don't know for sure. I would expect to see it there, but not necessarily the words dark sky.
Okay, well, I've, I've recently seen the term dark sky being used in, in a public context. I do think it was, it was perhaps on a project that was in the county, not in the, in the city. And I was sort of surprised to see it, because I thought, well, it's just, it's a series of specifications. And, you know, they are either required by the state government or not, or by the county government or not, or by the city government or not. And, and the question is, I would just want to, how do we make sure that we harmonize our, our code to adopt all of? Because dark skies is not just one thing, it's a whole lot of things. It's the brightness, it's the direction of the light, it's all.
Not fall on adjacent properties and all that.
I can't speak to before I was here, but I was involved in the county's dark sky ordinance. The, the Green Coalition had done it in Ojai. And they had been working for four or five years to get the counties to go along. So I was with the Green Coalition when we advocated for that before the county supervisor. We actually made the county one a little tougher than the city one, because it required actual existing buildings over, there was a, there was a, what do you call it? I can't think of the right word now, but when, when, Jesus, my mind's not working. When, when something has been used long enough, you can require them to make a change. There's a term for that.
Retroactivity?
What is the term? Your lawyer should be, it's called, anyway, it's just like we do with billboards, you know? They've been there long enough, you say that, that they have gotten their useful value worth, so you can require.
It's not like, I, I, we're just talking, it's not legal non-conformity.
Vested rights?
What?
Vested rights?
No, no, it's, it's basically, it's basically.
Grandfathered in?
No, you can legally require a change in use, like a, a service station. If they've gotten their, I can't think, it's an economic term. If they've gotten their return on investment back. And it's a technical term, but anyway, so we, we.
I'm not sure that's legal here.
Yeah, it is. Not, it is in the county. You can do it almost anything. You can ban billboards as long as, over a certain period of time, they've gotten their.
They've been able to recoup, they've been able to recoup their depreciation.
Recoup to depreciation. There's a term for it, but anyway, we, what, what we did was we put time limits on like service stations. And so they had like 10 years to.
Where, who was, who is we that did this?
I was working with the Green Coalition to advocate with Ventura County, and they implemented that in their ordinance. So they, they.
Okay, so that applies outside the city?
That, yes, but the city did not have any grandfather clauses in it. So nobody is going to be required to, unless they change out their lights or something.
Okay.
How are we going to approach this? Are we going to be going through this, I hope not page by page? Or can we simply go to the places that we thought we had a question or a suggestion?
Yes, yes, ma'am, exactly. Yeah, that's the plan. We don't, we don't want to do through every page, yeah.
May I direct your attention to Attachment A, page 35? And this is not a correction, this is really more of a question. In the third paragraph on water and sewer availability, it says that the applicant must demonstrate that there is sufficient water supply and sewer treatment capacity to serve the proposed affordable project consisting of will-serv letters from the municipal water and sewer purveyors. And a few lines further down, it says, "In the absence of will-serv letters, the affordable housing shall not be granted a zoning clearance." My question to you is, why don't we require that upfront in a project rather than at the back end? And forcing us to all spin our wheels and take up a lot of city staff time? Why not request that the will-serv letters come first?
Can I add a little more question to that?
Well, let's, let's.
Let me have mine before we change the first answer, of course.
So it's a, it's a, it's really kind of a policy question, more than a codified question. I noticed that, and I, this is actually the SPL, yeah, it's the SPL overlay standards that this is referencing. And this was one of the mitigation measures that was identified within the environmental review for the housing element that included all of these different pieces to this, to the SPL that we have here today. And that was from 2014, I want to say. So it's, it's specifically referenced in here because of that very purpose. Will-serv is required upfront here as a part of the zoning clearance. Now, granted, that's a zoning clearance, which is handled at staff level. The design for, for SPL, for those developments still have a design review permit that go through this body as objective standards, by today's standards. As a will-serv, that's required to be done upfront. And that's the, the water purveyor, and the same thing is true with sanitation. They've got to provide us with that information upfront.
Lucas, are you saying that it only applies to SPL and, and not to any project?
In terms of the codification, yes. SPL, it's required upfront, before they can even move forward. As a part of the conditions, they have to go out and then get a will-serv. Availability letter is what the policy typically requires for new construction. So is water available? And then either sanitation or casitas will come back and say, yeah, we've, we've got availability. You've, but then they'll also say, look, you've got to come back and get a will-serv. Requiring the will-serv upfront is, is something we're looking at from a policy standpoint, requiring moving forward. But that's a, it's a policy question.
I, I understand that, and, and I, I do have other little specific errata things in here. But I, I, when I came across this, I thought, well, that was really interesting. And it seems inefficient to.
And it's an interesting question to have and to, to pose, because when, when having conversations with particular developers that are looking in these, these specific zoned areas, when you mention the will-serv upfront and having that conversation, conversation with casitas, their, their immediate response is, oh, yeah, we'll provide you with the availability letter. And it's like, no, 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 we're, we're talking about will-serv, which is a different conversation apparently from that agency standpoint. The same thing is true with sanitation as well.
The other, the other thing to keep in mind, I think that the process that's currently in place achieves what you're looking for. Because if I understand it correctly, when a request for a building permit or, or a variance or whatever comes in, the first thing that staff does is a zoning clearance. I, I believe, I, I think I've been told that.
Yeah, so for instance.
Even a fence permit, the first thing they do is a zoning clearance.
Yeah, it's, it's.
This says if you don't have it, you don't get a zoning clearance.
Yep, you've got to provide all the information.
If these, if these assurances are not in place, staff stops at the first step.
Let me give you another example. Tonight, we just heard an item, and this body approved that item. Their next step is to go back and get building permits. As a part of that building permit requirement, what does planning require? We require a zoning clearance to ensure that the building permits that are being submitted are consistent and compliant with the actions that were taken forward by this body. So the zoning clearance itself ensures checks and balances, I guess, to a certain degree.
Okay, I, I think that, that my concern was the order in which these things happen, so that.
Right.
We are being efficient.
Yeah, so the order, I'm assuming the order you're saying is why the will-serv at the end? Why not the will-serv at the beginning?
At the beginning.
That's a fair question.
Of all, of all projects, not just SPL or?
It's a fair question. It's a policy question versus a codified question, with the exception of the SPL. The SPL is the only place where it lives currently that requires that to be done upfront, upfront.
For example, with the American Legion, that's an SPL request, isn't it?
If the, if the Legion ends up having the overlay, then yes, that would be one of the requirements upfront.
Upfront.
They came in for a discussion, though.
They did.
They didn't, they didn't request a permit.
Right, I, I understand.
Or an overlay, yeah.
Concept of.
Yeah, and I, I would prefer that we stay, I mean, I'm, when I mentioned one earlier, I didn't give a specific location. Can we not give?
I, I just wanted to make sure I was.
Okay.
On track with you.
Okay, I have some follow-up with the same issue here.
Okay.
So my understanding is nobody else is required to have a will-serv letter at this stage but affordable housing overlay?
Correct.
That seems like a little prejudice against affordable housing, to me, anyway. But secondly, doesn't this violate state law? Because you can't require, you can't turn down an affordable housing unit unless you're on a complete moratorium?
Who's turning down housing?
I don't know. If they don't get the will-serv letter.
That is up to the agency to make that determination, not the city.
Well, then the state would override them? Who, who would, who would override?
Yeah, there's state law that actually requires the, the, the agency, in this case, casitas, to, to make sure to provide for first, basically, it's like a first-in-line.
Yeah.
Aspect, and it's, it's built into state law.
So why are we making it appear that we can stop somebody when state law gives the authority to somebody else to make this decision? And we're acting like we're making the decision here?
It's upfront versus, yeah, I mean, look, like I was telling Commissioner Murphy, it's a policy piece. It's a policy piece in terms of, for I don't know how many years, this city has been doing a, an availability letter as only the requirement versus the will-serv.
And I did ask, I did talk to the head of casitas about this issue, actually. Because I've heard other people bring this up, complain about it. And he pointed out to me that there was a big difference between availability and the specific requirement of the development for water. So you could have a development that has basically zero water compared to the amount of units they have. And so they might be able to get a will-serv as opposed to someplace that is not using water efficiently. So they, and they also. is not using water efficiently. So they, and also they can override their standard rule about the 10 acre feet if the board decides that, that this is something they can do. So that's a, a case by case decision based on the actual design of the development. Whereas availability of water is a more broad issue. So it seems to me.
Are, are you advocating that people be allowed to put up housing where there's no water?
No, no, they have to still get a will serve letter, but they don't give the will serve letter until they apply for their actual permit. And that shows, you know, how they're going to use water or not use water, how much water is going to be used in that particular facility. And then they get the well serve letter based on the specifics of that development. But we don't know that because we haven't done a water survey of each development at, at the point that we're evaluating this. Obviously, we want to encourage as much water service, but we don't, it's not our authority to make that decision.
No, it's not.
It's a decision.
Not the cities either.
No, it's not cities either. So it's actually, that's why they make a distinction, let's explain to me anyway, between the availability, there's water available, and will serve, which is whether we're going to give you.
Whether there's enough available?
Or the amount of water that this particular development is going to use, we're going to allow you to have. And they can, they can, you know, in certain circumstances, allow something that would appear on the surface to be too many units or something if they were saving water.
Okay.
So they're making that decision.
Are we saying the availability letters for water and sewer respectively are an affirmation that, yes, there's a water main in the neighborhood, yes, there's a sewer main in the neighborhood, period?
Yes. Is there, is there availability of water, meaning is it within reasonable, a reasonable location, and they're going to say, yes. This is the line that's in this location, this is, this is where the water's at. And then they'll identify a will serve, which will be a deeper dive into.
How much you need.
How much you need will be done at a later.
What pressure?
They're not even identifying.
What pressure and flow over what period of time?
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of the confusing piece.
It doesn't seem appropriate that we're asking for well serve letters when someone's just designing their, their element.
Yeah, I don't want to, I, I don't want this commission to get into the weeds on, on the will serve piece. I think to Commissioner Murphy and Commissioner Starkweather's points, yes, absolutely will serves from this perspective, from the SPL overlays perspective as a part of the mitigation that was a part of the EIR that was done in 2014. Makes sense. Has there been a lot of things that have changed over the last eight years? Certainly, certainly. And that could very well be something from a policy standpoint, we take a closer look at. I certainly have for any sort of projects that are moving forward outside of the SPL overlay. For the purposes of what we're talking about here, we're talking errata. I do appreciate the deeper discussion, but just recognize that we're looking at errata.
The rest will all be errata.
What I would urge all the commissioners to do is read this, well, don't, don't just read this stuff, read Title 10. And if there's stuff in there that goes clunk when you read it, make a note of it.
Oh, I made notes all over the place on this one.
And we'll go into Phase 2 with that stuff.
Yeah, I didn't expect.
This was supposed to be the low hanging fruit.
It is.
And, and to clarify one thing that Alex said, there were actually two different sessions, two different batches of changes, one in 2020, one in 2021, that previous planning commissions approved. That's some of what you see in blue in here. The rest of what you see in blue here is either things that Alex and I worked on over the last four months, or it is stuff that somehow wound up in the code that's different from the versions of the code that we had in 2020 and 2021. And so far, we haven't been able to explain how that wording wound up in the code. But so there's actually three different sets of stuff in here.
Yeah.
But just to give you an example of, of other things that need to be done, well, one thing prior commissions said was, if you're going to name a code section, or an article, or a chapter, or a title, and not all the subsidiary stuff, then put that, put that name in there. Name that paragraph. Name that article, name that chapter, whatever. And so that's a lot of what you will see in here when it calls out, for example, on page 63, Director Determination, it says Section 10-2, 2906, Notice of Decision Direct. So one of the things that we did was add titles, right?
Okay.
Other, other things, though, that still need to be thought about. If you go to page 64, 10-2, 1103A. You will see in there where we've put titles in, we didn't just say artic, it used to say, for example, Article 20 of this chapter. So we changed it to Title 10, Chapter 2, Article 20, put the name in, and deleted of this chapter, okay? But on the next line down, where we did the same things, at the end, it says unless exempt. Okay? Nowhere could we find in the code, how do you know if it's exempt? So that's, that's another one of those questions that doesn't fall under this easy to fix stuff.
Okay, you want an easy to fix thing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I got one for you. It's really easy. Page 49.
Great.
The third line from the bottom of the page, where it says, "Shall be ministerial perm dot it." Got it? Okay. See, that was quick.
Delete a peri, delete a period.
Yeah.
Very good.
And, and while you guys are, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, one more on page 59. The last sentence. Never mind. Never mind, sorry.
Can, I have a couple of, for 59. On page 46, you've added a whole chapter on hedges. That's not errata, that's a whole new thing, I take it. Page 46 was 230, yeah. It has requirements of this section, I guess this is fences, but you have a whole new thing on
Hedges.
Hedges. That looks like a whole new policy.
Hedges is already existing in the code.
Oh, you just moved it there?
This is, yeah, I don't know why this is colored differently, but it is, it's existing. This was already codified
Oh, okay.
when it went forward to City Council in 2000, in 2020, early 2020.
Okay.
We can, we can make that change.
It seemed like a very subjective section to me.
There are a few things in here that are pretty subjective.
Public safety hazard, it's a nuisance, it's injurious to the public's health and safety, it encroaches upon, I mean, those are all totally subjective.
Public, public health, safety and welfare.
Well, the whole architect's stuff is even worse.
Phrase that's used a lot.
Right.
By the City Council, and I'll be the first to agree that it's extremely subjective.
Say, right in that same area on page 48, there's a reference to 10.2803. I couldn't find 10.2803. It skips from 80, let me go back to that. It jumps to 804, it starts at 801, back on page 40.
No, the, oh, oh, I see the confusion. This, this document that you have here reflects changes to the code, proposed changes to the code. If there is a section of the code that is not in this 200 pages, it's because we're not currently proposing any changes to the code.
I see.
That's why I said, read this, but go back and read Title 10 online.
Okay.
And all those missing numbers will be there.
Okay, that was confusing to me.
Yeah, this is not a full, great point, this is not a full accounting of Title 10, what you're seeing. It's only selected portions that we chose for change.
Really long if we had all the unchanged sections.
On page 61, it, it has a section that, it just says reserved. What, what does that mean?
So that's a great question, because as you see it, it's not in blue there. That's, that's what's currently in the code right now. So there's, there's many instances like that where we are trying to ascertain the meeting as well. So, yeah, we're, we're unsure.
Yeah, for whatever reason, when that code section came online, I want to say probably, it was, it was around the same time that, that the housing element, which was Cycle 5, came online. There were also a whole bunch of code section changes within 90, I think it's 905, isn't it? Is that what we're residential? Yes. For some reason, they had reserved in here. I have, I have no idea why.
I, I have a good idea why. There, there are places in the code with reference to other pieces of code saying, this other piece of code requires thus and so, and so do this in accordance with that. Well, if that other piece of code was deleted, it may have just been deleted by saying, we're going to leave the paragraph there, but call it reserved instead of having requirements in it. We've, we saw this in several places.
Yes, yeah.
And, and in particular, if it was a very long section of code, it was easier just to say, leave it reserved, and don't go and renumber everything that follows.
Okay, got it.
And, and another thing that might help when you guys are perusing this is that, just like you saw there, anything that's not in blue is not a change from us. That's what's pre-existing in the code. So if you have questions for those things, we most likely have questions as well, you know?
But the whole fence sections on page 47 and 48 are in blue.
Right, so we also did.
Saying that they're existing, or you've added all that?
So those are also examples of us changing the, the punctuation of the paragraphs. So there's many examples in the code too where there's improper punctuation of indentations and things like that, that, you know, numbers should be in, in their, are in their improper place. We also made those changes. So those might come up as fully blue as well, but in reality, we haven't really actually changed any of the content. We've just moved lines over.
Yeah, I think it's, we'll go back through and, and clean some, I'm sorry, Commissioner Murphy, just to clarify. We'll go back through and, and clarify some of that, because really what, what is important for the ordinance to move forward is identifying the areas that are going to be stricken, which will have the strike through, and the areas that are being added, which will be the underline.
Yeah, is that, yeah, oh, sorry.
It's the whole reason why it's a discussion tonight, but I think it's important to ask those questions. Is this area that's going to be changed? And the reality is, this is an area exists, but there were some minor things that were changed, which then highlighted the whole thing, which wasn't intended.
Yeah, that's confusing.
On page 98, there's blue, but I don't understand if it's indicating that it's new?
If, if it's underlined, it's new.
Okay, this is just.
This is highlighted.
Highlighted, and I don't know what that meant.
I think that, go ahead, sir.
Uh, back on, on 47, before we leave that, that top paragraph on 47, as I recall, the only things that we changed in the first six lines or so was where it said, for example, in line 3, 7 feet, feet. We just took out the first feet. And I think there's three, four, four places there in those first six lines. I believe those are the only things that should be in blue. But you can go check.
So when you cross something out, like on page 47, paragraph 3.
Yes, mhm.
You didn't eliminate it, you'd moved it somewhere else, is that what?
No, so strike throughs are elimination, yeah, from the code.
So why, why is that? Is that not a requirement anymore? Fences and walls should be a minimum of five feet from the public right of way and show.
That was something the City Council changed.
That is actually something the City Council changed. So that's being stricken, and that won't be showed. That won't be actually on this ordinance when it comes forward for this commission.
Because it's already gone?
Because it's already removed, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, same as, same as the City Council increasing the approved height of fences in the front setback from three feet to four feet. That's in here now somewhere. The City Council did that without that question passing through the Planning Commission.
Wait, say, say that again?
Increasing the allowed height of a fence in the front setback from three feet to four feet. That was done specifically by the City Council at the request of one City Council member.
Yes, but the, the fence discussion came before this body on, on a couple of different occasions.
Yes, oh yes, we've discussed fences quite a bit.
Now, obviously, as, as items are, are passed through this body as a recommendation, the council has the ultimate authority if, if they see additional items.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, page 98, could you tell me why that's highlighted?
Ma'am, I think that's just an error.
Oh, okay.
98, where it's, where it's highlighted.
There's some highlighting in there. Oh, and it still says AD researching and SQ3. So those things need to be dropped out, too, of course.
So when Chair Qualsey and I went through this, we highlighted a few items that I would research for, for more information. And so I think there's a few instances where we, I forgot to get rid of that highlighting. So that's one, that's a good example. Thank you for the cash.
There's also one on page 80. Page 80, paragraph, capital G, there's an SQ2 that should be dropped out, and there's some highlighting there.
I've got a question on page 145. It's actually a policy question, but since you've added policy here, I think it's relevant. On the bottom, number two, you describe if a hearing cannot be completed on a scheduled day, the presiding review authority member, you can continue the hearing. But can't we continue deliberation as well? Otherwise, we could.
Deliberation is part of the hearing.
Well, no.
Just like public comment is part of the hearing.
Really? I would think those are separate things.
Which page are we on, first of all?
I'm on page 145. I mean, the public hearing, once it's closed, then if you haven't continued it, you could be deliberating, say, we're going to continue our deliberations. You're not continuing the public hearing. Isn't that correct?
If you've closed the public hearing, and I'll have the attorney, correct me if I'm wrong here, if you've closed the public hearing, you deliberate, and then you continue, and you bring it back, you then have to reopen the public hearing, or leave the public hearing closed, and then continue deliberation.
Yeah, so you could say, we're just going to continue the deliberation, and you could vote to do that, couldn't you?
You could, yes.
Okay. You don't have that in here as a possibility.
You said 147?
45, bottom paragraph.
So I, I think one of the reasons why we, we haven't added anything of content, right, is because we haven't reviewed those, those more policy.
But it's this content here that I'm reading that's underlined.
I, I think that. Right, so that was, that was, that was indented. That was one of those instances where that was indented.
Even though it's underlined, you're throwing me off here.
Well, no, yeah, we, we, you can take entire sections and indent them, and then track changes would, would highlight the whole section.
As part of errata, we had some paragraphs where we tried to do some clarification. Not just adding titles of.
But I, I think we ought to clarify that, that you could continue the deliberation separately from the public hearing.
I, I believe that's correct, although I believe there, there might be a time period for, you might have to reopen public hearing if it's put out too far.
Okay, okay. I don't know what that time period is, but anyway, that would be worth looking into.
That's why you're a lawyer and I am not.
Well, sometimes, you know, when you have really super contentious public hearings, and they lasted for four hours, you know, if you have to come back and reopen the public hearing again, you'll never get to your deliberation, but since you've given an amazing amount of time, and people can write letters to the City Council, to us, why not just continue the deliberation? Because we might decide we want to think about it a little bit, you know, but we want to come back and talk about it. And maybe ask staff to bring us back more information. So anyway, I think that it should be a possibility that we should be able to do. That's all I'm saying.
This just talks about, about continuing a hearing to a date certain or to a date uncertain or off calendar.
Yeah, yeah.
It clarifies that. It doesn't say right here what you have to do if you reopen the hearing.
Actually, on page, I didn't even notice it until we were talking, page 146, it makes a statement that I don't think is accurate. The commission shall announce and record its decision at the. "The commission shall announce and record its decision at the conclusion of the public hearing." We don't have to do that.
Pardon me?
A, one forty-six.
One forty-six. We don't have to announce a decision at the conclusion of the public hearing. We can continue the matter.
If it's continued, then we haven't reached the conclusion of the public hearing.
I know, but it says here, "Shall announce and record its decision at the conclusion." Well, it makes it sound like, you know, we are making a decision.
Conclusion of the public hearing. If we continue it, we haven't concluded it.
Well, we conclude the public hearing.
We had, if we continue the item, and it's a public hearing item, then we have not concluded the public hearing.
But we could conclude the public hearing and just deliberate, that's all I'm saying.
And not, and not announce a decision?
But it also requires a decision.
Eventually, yes, but not that night.
If there is no decision that night.
Not, you could-
If there is no decision that night, then there is, there's no obligation.
There's no, if there's no decision to announce, then we can't announce and record.
That's true, but other ways, I, I-
But it's because we haven't reached the conclusion of the public hearing.
If it's, if it's something we can legally do, we ought to put it in there so that it's clear to people that, it doesn't sound like we're doing something illegal if we do it.
What is it, what is it, okay, I'll grant you, what is it that you want?
I want to be able to say that one option the board has is to conclude the public hearing and deliberate and decide at the end of the deliberation that they want to continue the deliberation only.
That's back here.
Then that's a question for the, for the city attorney, is that, is that legal?
Right, i- i- it's legal, but, uh, again, I, I think the, the time period, and I'll, I'll have to double-check, is, is fourteen days for certain these matters where you continue without, uh, additional public comment.
Oh, okay.
So this is why for contentious-
That would work perfectly for us.
Contentious issues of like the city council, usually, you know, they have meetings, uh, back-to-back nights sometimes, if, I don't know.
Either two weeks or three weeks between meetings.
Right.
Depending on the month.
Well, we meet every two weeks.
No, we don't. We meet twice a month.
Twice a month, okay.
Right.
So sometimes it's two weeks between meetings, sometimes it's three.
Yeah, okay.
So can you fix number two to make that?
Anyway, that's something to, maybe it's a policy issue down the road, but anyway. Doesn't need to be changed at this point.
Okay, I see what you're saying, though. A hearing may be continued. That's different from a case being continued.
Yeah, I mean, a hearing would be typically a public hearing. That's what we'd be referring to, which then follows the parameters and noticing procedures.
I think what Commissioner Starkweather is talking about is, we've concluded the public hearing of the case. And this doesn't cover con- continuing just the discussion-
Yeah, and the vote, yeah.
-of a case.
Yeah, so-
So that may be something that we want to add.
So let me ask a question, just as a discussion piece. And mind you, it's kind of a high-level discussion, but it also has some parameters and some context to it as well. Continuing it for what reason?
Uh, I would say that, I, I've worked in other counties, and they had a standard rule, they don't make a decision on a hearing night. Because the problem is that you have a three-hour hearing, and you've got your staff, you've asked questions, you're exhausted. First of all, it makes the people that came to speak, if you decide that night against them, like you didn't really listen to them.
This, this is true, and I've heard it from the public.
And so it's really a better policy if you're having a lengthy public hearing, particularly a contentious one, that you don't make a decision that night, and you give people a chance, they can write letters to you. You might even have things you want to ask staff about that came up in the public hearing. We've had that, where they say, someone gives false information or gives some new information, "We'd like you to explore," but-
Then, then we continue the item.
The item, so that you don't have another three-hour public hearing before we get back to it again.
Sure.
Are there two different, are there two different public hearing phrases going on here? The whole meeting is a public hearing, but then there's the public hearing portion in which we hear from the public.
There's public comment as a part of the public hearing.
Yeah, okay, that's-
And there's deliberation as part of the public hearing.
So there's two, there is public comment on anything, but there's official legal public hearings that we're required to hold before we make certain decisions. So any item that is not even a decision, that doesn't require a public hearing, we still allow public comment. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking when we're legally required to have, to hold a public hearing, and then we close that public hearing, and then we have to make, we deliberate. That's, that's the one I'm talking about, not-
Gotcha.
You're saying you want to know when, when can we not have public comment if we continue the item?
Yes, I mean, if it were, if we only had four or five people, it wouldn't matter, but if we had a hearing that lasted for three hours, then-
I, I think that's a useful question for Epi.
It's, while I, before Epi answers, here's, here's what I'm thinking with this, and it gets to, these, these provisions have come before this body on a couple of different occasions and have been voted on already. When I had that conversation with the commission body at that point, obviously, there's three new ones tonight that we're having the discussion. This was my, this was my response when we started getting in too in-depth on certain aspects, which really are probably more of a, um, more than a policy piece and kind of having more to do with how, for instance, this example, how a meeting is handled-
Procedural question.
-handled in procedural questions. That's a, that to me is quote-unquote, "A deeper dive." And when it falls into that category, we log it in, we make note of it, and it's something that we'll bring up as a bigger discussion. I think we're already having that discussion.
I'm satisfied with that. I just, I just noticed that, and that's the only reason I brought it up.
Well, I, I think that's good, so whether we call it policy or whether we call it procedure, there's going to be another list of things that we go to next. So let's just put ten-two-twenty-nine-oh-five-
On the list.
On the list.
On the list.
And, and specifically, are there conditions in which we can continue an item after the public comment portion is concluded? And not reopen the public por- comment portion?
Public hearing portion.
Public hearing portion.
Well, public hearing is the name of the whole case.
Right.
It's a type of case, as opposed to this, which is a discussion.
Which has certain parameters that have to be followed by state law.
So, so I think that's the question, is what, what flexibility do we have in terms of public comment on a continued case?
Yep.
Or a continued item?
A contentious item.
And the question is, is, is there a, an obligation? If we ha- if we continue a case to have a public comment?
At the continued session.
At the continued session, or can we be working off of the public comment that we had at the previous meeting, but we are discussing, um, new legal counsel that we're getting on the subject or some other thing, and-
So that's the question. What flexibility do we have in continued items with regard to public comment?
Yes, yes.
And, and if I can just reassure everyone, when we leave tonight, it's not your tacit approval of what's here, right? That's for another meeting, so don't feel as though that you need to find everything right now before we leave tonight. That's for another, that's for a subsequent meeting. This is really the introduction of the changes that we've made preliminarily for you to see. And then, as Chair Qualsey was mentioning before, if, if you, uh, if you so desire, if you have the time, to definitely take a, a, a deeper dive into Title X and see everything, um, and then, and then make those changes, let us know, and then we can have that, that deeper dive and go into everything that, um, that you guys find through that. So just want to reassure you guys that, um, when we leave tonight, that's not your tacit approval of, of what's in there right now. This is just an introduction of what we've found thus far.
We're not voting on anything tonight.
Can I, can I clarify just one thing, cause you said it, but I, I, my mind is not remembering it. What is the difference between blue and underlined blue?
So, underlined blue is, is an ad. That's an, that's an ad, and then, uh, just, so there's no, there's no blue that's not, every blue is either underlined or struck through. So there's no, there's not just any just blue, if that makes sense.
Yeah, there were some.
That are just blue?
Yeah, that whole section under signs is all just blue.
Uh, what, what section is that?
Uh, forty-six, forty-seven,
Oh, yeah.
Forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty. All those things have blues that are not underlined.
Yep.
That was confusing to me.
Is that from a different batch?
What page is that?
No, most, most of that should not be-
Forty-six to four, to fifty, fifty are all blue without underline. Now, there may have been others. I have to go look and look. I, I noticed those, but anyway. I guess everything else is underlined.
The one, the one that we referenced in the, in the beginning, the fence piece, I just looked that up and it's already in the code, um, and I remember specifically having that conversation with council and adding that in. So it, it's already in there.
So it shouldn't have been blue.
It's likely highlighted as blue because, um, there was, like, um, Alex was saying, there was some sort of margin issue, and once you, once you do that with track changes, and we got to go back in and, and clean some of that up, uh, because it's not underlined for obvious reasons, because it's not an ad, but it's been highlighted to make note of it, because a change had been made. It's just not a change that's a substantial change. It's more like a, um,
Punctuation.
punctuation change. So those shouldn't be, those really shouldn't be, um, showing up to the degree that they are.
On page ninety-three? It give, it, it says in the chart, at the end of the chart, it says year, but it doesn't tell you what year. So that's a little less than helpful.
Yeah, year, year might better be written as total.
I'm assuming it's, it's total.
Because in fact, it's, it's the sum of those January through December numbers.
And if, if, it would be wonderful if we knew what year those numbers came from.
Yeah.
How old are they?
All I can tell you is, it's newer than 2015, but-
Yeah.
But, um, our prior planning commissioner who had these numbers did not know which year it was, but knew that it was newer than 2015. I'm not sure where they get, where, where one would get updated evapotranspiration data of the Ojai Valley area.
There's a couple, I mean, there's a couple of different sources that we can look at to get that data, but it's, it's hard data that's updated annually.
If you can, if you can find data that matches this and you can place a date on it, then let's put a date in where it says 2015 striked out. And if you can't, or if you find whatever numbers, there should be a date involved with them, and that's my, my oversight. I would suggest also that year should read total, because that's what it is.
I hate to go back to something we just discussed, but given the, what you explained to me about the underline and the, and the non-underline.
Page number?
Or going back to page one forty-five, it seems like you've added that explanation of the process, if I'm reading that right.
Which page again?
Yes, one forty-five, where we talked about continuing a hearing.
So you're, you're adding something that wasn't there, that's explaining what the process is?
So, yeah, I, I can, I can explain that, yeah. So, uh, one forty-five, it combines what, so what's, what's currently in the code right now, because Lucas asked the same question, uh, section ten-two-twenty-nine-oh-five, there's A, B, and C, and then there's subsections one, two, and three. What we did here is that we combined sections two and three, and then we, uh, or, uh, yeah, we combined sections two and three, and then we got rid of the, uh, the number three. So we, we didn't actually add anything.
Oh, so the wording is all the same?
The wording is all the same, yeah.
Okay, okay.
But Lucas asked that question before you did, yeah.
Okay.
Where, where's, um, affordable housing in here, do you remember?
Uh, affordable housing is ten-two-
Nine oh-
Ten-two-nine or ten-two-seven?
No, nine oh-seven or nine oh-five, yeah.
Nine oh-seven, nine oh-five, okay. So it's going to be back before page ninety. Nine-ten, nine-ten is on page sixty-two, so it's just before that. Nine oh-four is on page fifty-nine. Nine oh-seven is not something that, that there are any proposed changes to right now. But ten-two-seven also has, ten-two-seven is, is, uh, overlay zoning districts. So there's material on SPL in ten-two-seven also. Seven oh-four. But, uh, ten-two-nine-oh-four, replacement housing, affordable occupancies, agency involvement, and there's your, oh, basic provisions. And you, and the definitions of the various levels of income.
Right.
So that's fifty-nine and sixty.
Okay.
Yes. Reviewing this is an ugly task.
Yes.
Well, now that I understand what I'm reviewing, I was a little confused, to be honest with you.
You are not reviewing all of Title X. You're only reviewing those portions-
But I was confused about what was underlying and what wasn't and all that.
Yes, yeah, and-
And I, so-
We can talk about it.
You basically said everything that, that's underlined is just, was already there, you just reorganized where you put it.
So-
Well, not necessarily. In, in that case, like the one we were looking at, it combined two, two points, but by combining those two points, it's showing it as new, and you have to do that to highlight it, because if you don't, then- Yeah, then Q code won't make that, won't make that reference, as long as this body-
It won't vote a Q code with all the underlining and strikeouts. Those are changes that you accept to get a clean, black-and-white copy that goes to Q code.
Well, you send both to them. You send them a clean copy and, and the strikeouts, to show them what the changes are, yes.
All right, so they can compare one to the other and-
Yes, because if you-
Make sure that the clean copy included all the changes?
Yeah, because they, they do verbatim. They, they don't, if you don't, if you don't, if, if, if a word happens to be capitalized in the middle of a sentence, they're going to do that verbatim portion. They're not gonna-
They're not going to change that.
They're not going to change that, because they're looking at it from an, you know, correcting the English language. That's, they're verbatim, so it's important that it's correct and precise.
On page sixty, you have a little chart here for replacement housing, and you make reference to certain exemptions. Where are those defined? I mean, I see they're stated, and we probably all know basically what they are, but where are they actually defined in the code?
So, uh, I believe those are, those are coming from the, the government code.
State government.
State government code.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because there was a lot of-
Shouldn't we make that clear?
You're talking about extremely low-income percentages?
No, 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 I'm talking about public nuisances and non-conforming uses.
Table four-dash-five.
Yeah, that chart, not, what a non-conforming use is, natural disasters, public nuisances.
Oh, I see.
Somebody's got to make a decision that the replacement housing, obviously, that was a major controversy recently, whether those exemptions apply, and so where are those definitions?
I'm sorry, I'm still not following. Where, where are we looking here?
Uh, table four-five, the very top one, project exemptions. Where is those definitions in our code?
Probably in the state law.
No, I think they're actually, they're tracking on, I don't know if they're necessarily on these previous pages, but within, because remember, these are only snapshots of areas, not necessarily an entire code section that's being pulled. So it's a snapshot of an area, like a page or two, not necessarily the entire subsection or section or article. So you're not going to see that here. What it, what it is doing is it's identif- and actually, here, this isn't even a change that we're talking about. You're just asking, where is this located within the code?
Is, is this, those definitions, is that in a, like a definition section?
Yes, yes, there is a definition section at the end of the code.
It's not within this section, a definition that defines it for this.
Let me also say that as, as Lucas and I worked on- Let me also say that as, as Lucas and I worked on the first two batches of changes, and Alex and I worked on the third set of changes, when we came across stuff like this, we would grab a phrase like that and go search the code for it.
Okay.
Is it there somewhere? Is it needed somewhere? And that would be the way to figure out, what does public nuisance mean? What does non-conforming use mean? See if that is in the code somewhere.
I, I intend to do that, yes.
Then go back to ledgeinfo.legislature.ca.gov and look in the government code, or the public resources code, or wherever, health and safety code, and search for the phrase in there.
But, but to add to that, Commissioner Starkweather, if you, ten-two-thirty-six oh two, that is the section of definitions for the entitled, uh, sorry, for the entire, uh, uh, title, Title X.
No, no. That's definitions for Title X, Chapter Two.
Right, right.
Chapter two, yes.
Chapter two.
Not all of Title X.
Not, not of Title X, yeah.
At one point in our earlier.
So each, each section has its own definitions.
Sometimes they do.
Sometimes they do.
Public nuisance would seem like it'd apply across the board, but, you know.
I, I can't tell you why, look, I can't tell you why attorneys feel it's necessary to put definitions in certain sections and not in others. But that's, for whatever reason, when certain sections have been added, sometimes there's been definitions that have been included within that specific section.
And, and it may be that a particular phrase has one meaning in this piece of the code and a different meaning in another piece of the code.
Well, I think that.
In fact, one thing we had, we had discussed early on was, should we pull all of the definitions from anywhere in the code and put them in a Title XI?
Uh-huh.
And that's all definitions. What you have to be careful to do if you do that, and I'm not suggesting we don't, is that when you have a word or a phrase, then you go back and you search the entire code for it. And if you find it in Title Four, and Title Seven, and Title Nine, and Title X, then you may have four different listings in Title XI that says this word or phrase means thus and so in this part of the code. It means something else in this part of the code. That would, that would be how you would have to clarify that.
So is it possible that, uh, public nuisance and non-conforming use are defined differently in different parts of the code?
Could be.
Uh, non, non-conforming from a Title X, Chapter Two standpoint, no.
I wouldn't think so.
It's pretty.
Ten-two-thirty-six oh two has definitions that apply in ten-dash-two.
So, um, since, shouldn't there be like some kind of a code reference next to that, since you, you're just looking at a chart here and it would make it easier to find it rather than having to go back and look at the.
You know, that's an interesting, okay, so let's just, let's just take a step back and think big picture. Cause I think you're bringing up an interesting point. Anytime that you read a term or a phrase, immediately, I mean, my thought, when I first started looking at this code, and I, I'm assuming Steve probably felt the same way. You look at that term and you're like, is it defined? So then you jump to the, to the definition section of the code. And you, you then begin to pour through whether or not it's,
Sometimes not.
whether that's there or not. If it's not, then you're, you're stuck with, okay, so then what does this necessarily mean? Right? And, um.
And that could be a policy question. It's, may not be errata.
Yeah. Yeah, so putting some sort of an asterisk or, or some sort of a kind of tickler to say, hey, this is actually defined, go to this section, is an interesting discussion. I don't think that we've ever had that discussion.
Well, yeah.
From a larger.
As a lawyer, as a former lawyer, retired lawyer. Obviously, I would always go through the definitions and look it up and be very precise about it. But a layperson looking at this thing, even a city council member looking at it, it might be useful to let them know that there are a definition of where it is.
Yeah, you call it a cheat sheet, if you will, right? When you're looking at something, you're like, well, clearly there's not a definition for it. There isn't this.
Cause this is, this is, this is really an important policy here. And it's gonna all rely on the definition and the specifics of that particular development, whether you're gonna require someone to replace housing. As we know, that's a very controversial potential issue. It ought to be very precise.
Yes. So I, and, you know, it's interesting that we're having this discussion, because it feels like deja vu to a certain degree regarding the definitions. I remember having this discussion via, um, Zoom, probably two years ago, uh, Chair Quillisi. And one of the, one of the commissioners asked, well, what happens if the definition isn't in here? Then how do we make that determination? Well, guess what? There is a provision that identifies what the next step is. So in section ten-dash-two thirty-six oh one, purpose of the article, it has, um, at the last sentence, it states, if a word is not defined in this article or in other provisions of the MISP code, the director shall determine the correct definition. So if we run into that situation.
Wow, you're talking about contention. That is ridiculous.
The king over here.
Are you kidding me?
I'm not saying that I like that.
You want lawyers to be dealing with something like that?
He's king around the margins.
That would be appealed. That, that's ridiculous. There shouldn't be nothing, nothing in here that.
Make, make notes of what changes.
That needs to be defined really clearly. That is crazy.
Where was that looking?
It's ten-two-thirty-six oh one.
Thirty-six oh one.
Not in here.
Thirty-six.
That's not a paragraph that we've suggested changes to.
If there's something in here that needs a definition, we need to make sure it has a definition.
Not this time.
I would say.
Not this time.
Sure.
I mean, that does make any sense to me.
There have been discussions that we've had before this body, where I've had to come up with a definition. And I explained the definition, where it came from, its origin, and, uh, in fact, I wanna say there was a project in the last year, not gonna say the specific one, but in the last year where I had to make a call on a definition, because it wasn't clar, it wasn't clarified.
And you and I had that discussion, and I looked, you told me where I could get the planner's dictionary.
Oh, yeah, the planner's dictionary, that's through APA.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could reference where it's not defined here, you can go to the planner's dictionary.
And that's typically my go-to.
Why not just stick that in there?
No, I wouldn't do that, because the planner's dictionary is a cul, a culmination of a bunch of different, uh, definitions from a bunch of different states and a bunch of different cities.
I see.
So a lot of the times, you'll see fence, and fence will be defined a dozen different times. Probably more, actually, if I recall correctly. Fence is highly contentious, um, from state to state.
What is a fence?
Exactly. Is it a structure? There's a whole bunch of different, I, anyway.
We don't wanna get into that.
Yeah.
Down a rabbit hole.
There's the general topic of fences, walls, and hedges.
Yeah, yeah.
We have had discussions in, with prior commissions. And so just on a lark, I did a search of the code for fence, wall, and hedge. Any one of those terms came up in something like fifty different sections of code, only about half of them in Title X. And so.
I don't know that we have time, but I think it's a useful exercise to look through this and make sure that something that could be disputed.
That is, that is part of your homework assignment.
I guess so, is we make sure we have a definition, because we don't wanna be having
We want.
Arguments about what something means.
We want a citizen who comes to the front desk in City Hall.
And knows exactly what it means.
And is told, well, this is the governing part of the code. And they read that governing part of the code, and they say, what does that mean? It's that sort of situation. We need to be able to say, this is where you find it, and this is a clear definition.
Mm-hmm, yeah, definitely. And in some, I've seen examples of codes that actually sometimes have pictorial definitions of things.
Oh, there, there are pictorials in our code.
We have.
Not too many in this, in this sphere.
We have some weird ones when it comes to design reviews. Subjective weird ones.
Subjective stuff, yes.
We do have pictorials illustrating setbacks and.
I think it's useful.
Encroachment into setbacks and stuff like that.
Can I ask this body a question? And I think Alex is, what I'm about to ask is, is not necessarily fun for Alex. Does it, does it make sense before this body to highlight those words that are actually defined within, um, ten-two-thirty-six oh one? Um, cause ten through thirty-six oh one has quite a few definitions.
Thirty-six oh two, yeah.
Thirty, I'm sorry, thirty-six oh two is the definitions, correct?
I think that would be very useful, cause then when we're looking through it, if we see something that is not highlighted, we might say, hey, wait a minute, we need a definition of that. To me, anyway.
I will say, it will, it, it is, it is a large task for.
Can't you do it by a computer? She's just, you go to your definition, you click on that thing and say, where else is that? And it highlights everything.
I don't wanna look at it.
Oh.
And he knows how to do it.
Oh, somebody must.
I'm sure there's an easier way to do it, but I'm thinking about the archaic way, which is literally going page by page.
No, no, I think there must be a search engine that you can use.
Awesome. If, I, I would suggest for starters, that when you read this, or you read the code, which is obviously more than this, and you come across something, what I do is I keep two versions of the code on screen. I've got a screen, twenty-seven inch screen, I can put two pages there. So I have one instance that has this document. I have a second instance, the other half of the screen, that has the code from online. Okay? And in the second half, you can go flipping to ten-two-thirty-six oh two.
See, I'm old fashioned. I printed the entire thing out, and so I have it in a notebook. But what I would do is just pull out, I'd pull out the definitions as a separate thing.
Straightforward, yeah.
Yeah, I would start by reading all the definitions first. Then I'd start going through it, because then you would have already known what the definitions, and it would kinda come to you, you know, you know what.
If you've memorized all the definitions.
Well, you wouldn't memorize it, but you might remember what's things started with an E or an F or whatever, and you notice something there, and it's not there, and then you look at your definitions. That's what I would do, cause I'm old fashioned, you know? I, I started farther with computers, so I'm sure you did too.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I started with a slide rule.
I took a slide rule to college.
Yeah, people used to carry them in their, in their.
My son said, what's that?
They literally taught slide rule when I went to get a master's in business administration. And by the time we graduated, two years later, they had invented the palm, a, a, an electronic one.
HP thirty-five, yeah.
Well, it was before the HP thirty-five, it was a Canon, and it was, and it took about twelve batteries, which had burned through in about three hours, and it cost, cost nine hundred.
But just think what we, what, what skill we got, patience and willingness to like stick to details, we wouldn't have gotten otherwise.
It rewarded.
Knock yourself out.
Yeah, it, it rewarded people who were panatic, is what it was.
This is, this is an introductory discussion to the changes.
Okay.
And, and in particular, note that there are, attachment B, page one, there are already questions that we have collectively identified as beyond the scope of errata and clarification.
Okay.
And renumbering and stuff like that.
Okay.
But that's what this is about. But as you go through it, if you find things that need more work, please, you know, put down a page number, a, a, a code section, and paragraph number, and.
Now that election season is over, I'm gonna have time.
This is not. We all wanted, we all wanna make this right.
Yeah.
But this is not the document from which to do it, because this is a pre-edited document of the stuff, of the sections that have already been gone through with, with changes. You really, cause for instance, in, in definitions here, we were only looking at D.
Yeah, no, we need to look at the original before they make the changes, obviously.
Right.
Cause we're looking at policy, not at technical stuff.
You go page one sixty-two, there's definition C. There's a lot of ten-thirty, ten-two-thirty-six oh two in here.
I'm gonna have one category, it's called, uh, subjective policies, and I'm just gonna list them all by numbers. And it, but probably, probably about ten, probably about ten pages long.
Put down a, put down a code section number, and the word or phrase that you feel is subjective.
Of good quality, like that?
Pardon me?
Of good quality.
Fine, fine, what about fine architecture?
No, I know, that's.
You heard that beautiful, beautiful music was, no, that's the only.
Then we'll come back and we'll pepper epi with all of this, because a lot of those are, what do you call it, a term of art?
I don't think fine architecture is a term of art.
I don't know. Good quality, uh, uh, craftsman-like.
Now, that's a specific thing.
Describe, not, not, not the architectural style, but describing a way of going about a task.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's true.
So I.
That may deal with skill and, and, but it may not have any to do with good design. And, uh, good, good design meaning something that, well, even that's, um.
There's much of it that's in the eye of the beholder, compatible with the neighborhood.
Right.
There's a subjective phrase, if you want one.
Yep.
Well, you could define what compatible means. What, what elements of compatibility you're talking about.
And if you have different architectural styles in the same neighborhood.
I agree, it's.
Well, there's none, by the way.
Probably shouldn't be there.
There's not, there's nothing wrong with different, uh, architectural styles in the same neighborhood, if that's how the neighborhood is made up.
Right.
But literally, there's a street, um, ground, when you get on it, everything looks as if it's, it's either the original development, or somebody went and modified a house that was part of it.
Some of them were tract homes, cause it's.
They were all tract homes.
Oh, were they?
Okay. And, and they all had the same setbacks, the same heights, the same.
Well, they could, we could just ban ADUs from that whole street.
Or, or get the ADUs in the, in the back of the house.
Without running afoul of the legislature, we can't.
That ship has sailed. That was maybe a standard from two thousand and five, maybe two thousand and two. No longer exists. I know what you mean. Look, we're getting kind of off, off task, but I do appreciate
We're, I think we're done with this topic.
The information and as.
Work for commissioners is to read this and read Title X. And write down where you have a problem.
When I'm on the airplane going to my vacation at Christmas, I'll just take it with me.
Sure you will.
Yeah, the, so just to sum up what Alex had said at the end of his, um, presentation is, when this comes back to this body, it will be with a resolution, it will be through a public hearing process. And there will be an exhibit to that resolution, which will be a refined version of this. We'll get this cleaned up a little bit more. Um, it won't be in blue, it'll be in red.
I would, I would have one other request. I don't know if you can fulfill it. I know the last time that Alex and I collaborated on this document, there were three different colors of highlighting in the document, not just the underlining strikeouts. But there was gray, which was those changes that were already approved by prior commissions. There was yellow that are the change, are the new changes that, that we are proposing for this year. And there were some green highlights where there was language in the current online code that did not appear in those same sections that the commission reviewed in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. I don't know where that wording came from, but those, there were three different colors of highlights in addition to the underlines and strike-throughs.
Okay.
And if we could restore this document to that, I, unless the attorney, unless the city attorney says it's necessary for this instantiation of the, of the planning commission to review and reapprove the changes that were already approved by prior commissions, unless he says that we need to do that, then having gray versus yellow versus green, at least this instantiation of the commission would know what's the new stuff that we're considering that our predecessors haven't, never saw.
That's actually a really good point. That, that would be a way to distinguish between, um, the sixty-five or eighty-something sections that the previous commission, including Chair Quillisi, have been a part of. So that you, you then are seeing those areas that have already been voted on versus the areas that are new, that are now being, um, voted on by this body's recommendation.
Right.
Now, the, the interesting thing is, is those can all be then converted over for the final version, going to city council for first reading and second reading.
Yeah, cause they won't have seen any of those three.
So the city council, this, this body voted for the previous, uh.
In twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
But they haven't gone to the city council.
Have not. And the, and the reason, just to give this body the, the kind of the context for why it hadn't gone forward was two reasons. One is, um, the staffing just wasn't there to do the, the, the necessary technical pieces. And the second piece is, there was a number of areas that, um, included charts and tables. And those, the pagination for those tables were just all over the place. We ended up finding. We ended up finding the original tables from two thousand and four, which made it a lot easier to transition. Um, but in order for us to do that, um, it was, it was a little bit of work and that's, that's where we're at here today. So it's become a lot easier. Uh, Quillis and I, when we were first doing this, for whatever reason, when we were copying stuff over, the tables were just all over the board from a word standpoint. It was frustrating.
Word, word made a mess of it.
So how are we gonna deal with this practically as a public hearing that, so that the public understands what they're being asked for input?
If you get this back with gray and yellow highlighting in it, that will also be in the online version of our agenda.
I realize that, so I'm just, we, we need to make it clear what we're asking inputs. So they're not, they're not all coming here and saying, I don't like this policy.
So they don't do what you did at the beginning of.
Yeah, that's right.
But I.
Judy started it. Judy started it.
City council can do the same thing. It doesn't matter whether it's gray, yellow, green or blue. This city council member can say, I don't like that.
But they'd have to go back to a public hearing.
Well, they, if, if the city, when the city council receives a draft ordinance that has all these text amendments in it.
It's not changing.
They have to have a public hearing.
Yes, but it's not changing policy. I, I don't know that they could write there, just go ahead and say, I don't like this, I'm gonna change the policy.
Speak up to the mic.
Oh, I don't know that they could just, that they could just read it and say, okay, let's just change this policy here. They have to go through the same.
It takes two readings to pass.
But they would have to come back to the planning board if they're gonna change the policy.
Uh, not necessarily.
Policy belongs to the city council.
I know, but to, to change the ordinance doesn't.
Override anything that we do.
But we're not changing policy, we're just correcting the organization of things.
By and large, that's what we're doing here.
Yeah.
Errata.
So when they receive it, they can't say, well, we've decided we're gonna have, we're gonna allow, you know, two, three stories rather than two stories or something. That, that has to go through a whole legal process before they could do that decision.
That's, that's a development standard, that's.
Yeah, so they can't make policy changes.
Don't let them hear you say that.
Well, ultimately they can, yes, they could order, they could say, I, we're asking the planning commission to consider making all these policy changes and then send it back to us and then we would.
We'll tell you if we approve or not.
Or we agree, you know, recommend or not, but they just couldn't sit up there at the plant, the meeting that they had not gone through the process here first and stay, you know, we're just gonna change all these policies.
But in fact, they have done that in the past.
I don't think that's legal.
Example I gave tonight. Changing, changing the allowable height of a fence in the front setback of a yard, they changed it from three feet to four feet. That question never came before the planning commission and it was done at the request of one city council member.
Well.
Who, who wanted to contain a dog in the front yard and was afraid the dog could jump a three foot fence, but not a four foot fence.
There were, I mean, there were several things that were discussed at, at planning commission. Obviously, that was before my time. I think that was in two thousand and eighteen, maybe, maybe early two thousand nineteen.
I've been here since sixteen.
Okay, so yeah, it was within your, within your tenure. I'm not getting into the details of that. I don't.
I don't think a city council can change an ordinance without going through the legal process. Just on this.
Ask the attorney.
We can get into specifics, I, I, I think at another time, but generally zoning text amendments must go through a planning commission uh reading for the first. So I, I guess the question for Commissioner Starkweather is, does this count as a planning commission reading? Um, and my understanding is that this is just focused on errata, but since there's no decision being made tonight.
Right.
Right. You know, what happened, I can't predict what's gonna happen at the, at the future.
Yeah.
But that's the current. Voting on a draft ordinance.
Correct, correct. Okay.
That'll be for a future agenda.
It sounds like everyone is on the same page for tonight.
Anymore or is the horse dead?
I think the horse is dead.
Okay.
But I appreciate the discussion.
Well, I just heard something, it sounded off to me.
We need to talk more. All right, let's move on to item four then. Priorities of planning commission and CDD. And there it is, right on the top of the list.
Yes, priorities of the planning commission and community development department. So I, what we do here is I've highlighted the, the areas that we've been focusing on as of recent. Obviously, title ten has been um the focus area that Alex is, from day one, we started working on title ten. Um, and that's a result of what we're seeing tonight at the previous item. Is quite a few sections, quite a bit to digest and for this body to, to work through, even from an errata standpoint. So just know that this is coming before this body, but there's also some work that needs to be done um before we get that ready to go.
And I appreciate the extra sets of eyes looking through all of this again.
And that, yes, I.
It's a big help.
I agree.
Alex and I found things that the previous planning commissions missed.
Yep. If there's questions that you have, feel free to send those over to myself or Alex. If you have questions that need a conversation, feel free to schedule that, we can always have that conversation. But just remember, it's an errata piece, not a, how are we changing some of this policy?
It's all aimed at clarification, not at changing.
Let's keep it, let's keep it focused, exactly. Um, and then the other one that I've highlighted is formula business. So there is gonna be some news coming out in the near future and I don't want to necessarily give that away. But just know that there will be, and I think I've mentioned this already, that we were looking at having um kind of community types of meetings in the near future. Initially, we were looking at December, but that just doesn't seem appropriate given the holidays. So we're looking at the new year, early on in the new year, so you can expect to see those um in the near future. And that's about as far as I'm gonna go with that one.
Okay. Yeah, we had some exciting sessions on the formula business ordinance already.
Yes, some, some heavy debate for sure.
We were at one of them. Oh, how about our ad hoc committees? Do the ad hoc committees have anything to report?
Uh, no, due to the circumstances of what's been going on, we really haven't had a chance to get going, but.
We, we really didn't try to get going until after the election.
So it'll probably be the first of the year since I'm leaving on the fifteenth for vacation. I have been doing though, actually quite a bit of research on the parking, just um, and I've found a whole new. There's a guy at Pomona who's like written a book, several books about how to make parking reform and the whole process. So I've been reading that.
Thanks, Alex. Thank you.
I'm thinking about.
Who is the individual out of Pomona?
His name is uh Richard Wilson, W I two L's. He's the head of planning at Cal Poly Pomona.
Huh.
And he wrote, he wrote two books, what I'm reading now is called Parking Reform Made Easy.
Okay.
And it's really like an outline of how you would go through the process. But he also talks about the benefits of it. And then he's got another book that I went and had ordered, Parking For uh
For dummies?
For Smart Growth.
Oh.
Parking Reform For Smart Growth. He wrote a second one. But uh.
For Smart Growth, interesting.
Since he's at Cal Poly Pomona, I'm thinking about, see if I can get him to come and be a speaker.
That'd be cool.
Not.
Well, just, just so you're aware, Alex is in, he's in grad school right now and he's going to Cal Poly Pomona, so I wonder.
Oh, maybe he knows him. That would be interesting. Maybe he might have a connection.
He's already left, but.
But uh, he studied under Donald Shroop.
Yeah.
The guy that wrote the, he, well, he's still at UCLA, but he's a meritist. He must be pretty old by now. Uh, but wrote The High Price Of Free Parking.
Right.
But this guy points out, the reason I liked his was that he said Donald Shroop's recommendations are more for big cities. And he's tried to gear his to suburbs and smaller towns. So it's that some of the, the.
Richard Wilson with two L's.
With a two L, yeah. I can send you the information if you're interested in.
Could you circulate it to everybody?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, hold on. Don't circulate it to everybody, circulate it to me.
Lucas.
Okay.
Thank you, you can't, yeah, we're gonna run into a Brown Act violation if we do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll send you what I had.
Perfect.
And I also had um, got some, you know, uh, journal review articles, so it's a little bit shorter. Uh, him describing the process, so.
Like Cliff Notes, if you will.
Huh?
Like Cliff Notes, huh?
Well, not exactly. Uh, yeah, this book is, I don't know, three, three hundred pages, but he also has a online thing that's only like sixty pages, so maybe that's what you wanna read.
Okay.
But he, it's very easy to read. It's not like technical stuff, except for maybe one little section of it.
My, my recollection, the last time formula business came up was that staff was working on some definitions of things.
Yes.
Further, further inform the commission.
Whether or not that definition needs to be included, or if it's gonna end up being thrown in the trash, that remains to be seen.
Right.
We are working on it, yes.
Okay. Let's go on to item five then. Are the, are the uh, are we doing December twenty one?
So, December twenty first. It shows that there is a two-story addition to the main residence at twelve oh six airs. That has not been noticed.
Is that a two-story addition or a second story addition?
It's a single story house, so it would be a second story addition.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
Wondering is it a two-story structure that's going in?
Yeah.
Or is it one story on top of another that's already there?
Yep, so it's a second story.
Okay.
That's, that's probably the better way to describe it. Um, notice did not go out on this item, so it is not gonna be heard for the twenty first, at least as a public hearing item.
Are we having a meeting that night?
That says to me.
Or yes.
So yeah, the other, the only other items that we would have would be general plan update and, and the work plan, so it's quite possible we'd be canceling that meeting.
I will.
Unless this body has something that they would like.
Carolina, I mean, I could theoretically.
There's no, there's no inventory of projects.
Under AB three sixty one.
We do not have what we had last year, which was that logjam.
No, you can't.
The case.
Yeah.
We have the staff to un, unclog after sure.
Or purported to expire at the end of February.
Oh, really? For having Zoom meetings?
No, no, AB three sixty one is purported to expire.
At the end of this year?
Or end of February.
Oh, okay.
That, I've heard that, this from several different sources. And I'm concerned about it because I'm also on the sanitary district board. Um, and we have the same situation there with, with people reten- attending remotely at the moment. And if three sixty one expires, then, then the governing legislation is up to the legislative body, and that's a legislative body, this is not. But do you go with Basic Brown Act or do you go with uh, is it twenty, twenty seventy nine or?
It, it's a little bit more complicated than this, because there's, there's, I think, one or two new bills that go into effect January first that allow.
Okay, twenty seventy nine or twenty ninety seven, whichever one it is, is already in effect.
I believe so.
Place to, to go into effect when three sixty one expires or is rescinded by the governor.
Right, and, and so there's, there's two competing bills and doing with this.
But there's more.
There, there's more. It is not a, it is not a clear field. Uh, but um, I believe we've provided a memo to the city council. I will double check.
Okay.
Make sure um that the planning commission is aware and, you know, understands the rules here and staff understands the rules.
City council is a legislative body.
Right.
And so they make the decision and it applies to us.
Right, yeah.
That's why we're all here.
Right.
Yeah, most boards have some remote way of people attending if they have legitimate excuses.
Basic Brown Act has provisions for that, but they are onerous.
They're onerous, there's been, and there's essentially been revisions about when uh zooming in or teleconferencing in is now acceptable and and what constitutes just cause under these um, one of the new laws and how many times you can do it and so.
Yes, all that stuff.
I, I can't describe it exactly all orally and, and I.
I've been through that part.
And I would not, just because.
Just cancel the meeting and I don't have to worry about it.
Well, here's, here's the situation. I don't think that we have substantial items to, to have.
If DRP twenty two dash twelve is not ready, then in my opinion, we should cancel the meeting because we shouldn't just get together for a general plan update and review of the work plan. That's, that's a waste of staff time.
Good use of, of time and resources. I, the only thing is, is we'd be canceled the twenty first and the, the first meeting in January. But just to be fair, during the holiday, it's gonna be tough to try to get an item ready for January fourth.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna kill us.
Basically that, that Wednesday after uh New Year's.
So you'll keep us posted.
Well, I will keep you posted. There could be an item that comes up, which is why I don't necessarily want to cancel the fourth at this point. It's saying tentatively canceled. If, for instance, twelve oh six airs is ready to go by then and we can get a notice out, then yes, we would be having it. Um, but I.
Everybody's entitled to a speedy trial if, if the case is ready to be.
If it's ready to be heard.
Right.
And, and we can do it in a, in a
I think I'm coming back on the third.
That's consistent with our rules. Yes.
I purposely did that.
I know I've got it, so that would potentially be two meetings canceled in a row. Um, but it's during the holiday season.
We work hard otherwise.
Well, in the past twelve months, this planning commission has had three special meetings just to help clear the backlog.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All of them last fall.
Yep.
So.
We met in midlife last week.
Bad if we had a couple of meetings canceled because there were no cases ready.
For right now, I think you can anticipate the twenty first would be canceled, but I can't.
But it may turn up again on the fourth.
Could, I could.
Okay.
We'll, we'll see what happens when, when we have those discussions with twelve oh six airs.
And, and the other pending items are all farther out, I guess.
They are. Some of them are getting close, but um, I think we can, there's already a couple of items we're looking at for the second meeting in January, so. I don't have that on here for the second meeting in January, but we've already started tracking it, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
I move we adjourn.
Any other business before the commission? If not, then at eight twenty seven, we're adjourned.